Going in thirty? I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Independent School District 279 School Board at six nineteen PM on Tuesday, July thirty first. We'll begin with introductions with Director Henke on my left. Go ahead.
Director Dean Henke.
Director Fortner.
Director Jim Burgett.
Mike Ostafi.
Heather Douglas.
Director Jessica Craig.
Thank you. If we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a motion to add to the agenda tonight approval of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights and Osseo Area Schools' collaboration agreement. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Director Henke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion passed six nothing. It will be added to the agenda. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda for tonight's meeting as revised. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director.
Douglas.
Douglas, thank you. That's why I have you introduce yourselves. I will forget names. Director Douglas, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the agenda is accepted, six to nothing. Let's see. Next thing on the agenda is the opportunity to address the school board by the audience. There are no cards for that, so we will move on to the next item, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Ostafi. I'm glad to be joining you tonight as your interim superintendent through the end of September. I'd also like to introduce, ready go. Well, I'll move on to the next part. I'd like to introduce a few of our new leaders. Joining us for the first time at tonight's board meeting are two experienced administrators who recently joined our cabinet team. I'd like to introduce them to you now. Patrick Smith. Indicate who you are, sure stand up. Patrick Smith is joining us as the interim assistant superintendent for the Division of Leadership Teaching and Learning. His most recent position was as the elementary principal at Basswood. And then also I'd like to introduce Laurel Anderson. She is our new executive director of human resources, again an experienced administrator, and most recently was our director of human resources, labor relations. Welcome. And now I'd like to introduce Dr. Jim Boe. He is, he'll serve as the interim superintendent then from October first through June thirtieth. Thank you, Jim. And Jim and I are looking forward to working alongside of all of you to accomplish our district mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. I'd like to talk a little bit about the school board filing. On November sixth, voters will elect four residents to serve on the sixth member school board for Osseo Area Schools. I want to highlight that this year voters will choose new board members on two separate ballots. Three seats will be filled through a general election because the members' terms are expiring. Those seats are currently held by Jim Burgett, Jessica Craig, and Dean Henke. Board members chosen in the general election will take office in January of 2019 and serve until January 2023. One seat will be filled through a special election due to the resignation of current board member Stephanie Fortner, who will step down on September thirtieth, 2018. The candidate chosen in the special election will take office in November 2018 and will serve until January 2021. The filing period for the four open seats began today and goes through Tuesday, August fourteenth. During the filing period, district residents who are interested in running for the school board can file affidavits of candidacy in the superintendent's office here at the Educational Services Center during regular office hours from eight AM to four thirty PM, Monday through Friday. On the final day, August fourteenth, the office will remain open until five PM. We've posted information on the district's website regarding eligibility and filing requirements. Interested residents can also call Sherry Lincoln at seven six three three nine one seven zero zero three for more information. And then lastly, I'd like to remind you that we have our eighth annual Reading is Fun 5K Run Walk. So lace up your sneakers and team up with the District 279 Foundation and Kid Stop, that's Independent School District 279 School Age Child Care Program, and participate in the eighth annual Reading is Fun 5K Run Walk. The event will be held on Saturday, August eleventh, at Elm Creek Park Reserve. While everyone loves supporting a good cause, many families also appreciate the health and social benefits of a run walk. Proceeds from this family-friendly event will be allocated to media centers and Osseo Area Schools to purchase learning resources. Go to District279foundation.org to register. Walk-ups are also welcome on the day of event. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I wanted to make a motion to remove item O for discussion, and that is the acceptance of the bid for disposable food service items. So I don't know that we have to make a motion to do it, rather than we will pull that from the consent agenda, and we will address that upfront. So that item O is a recommendation that we accept a bid for one hundred and twenty-four thousand or thereabouts for food service. We had six bidders, potential bidders, that we sent out to, and only one responded. Two did not, some didn't even respond, some refused to bid. So I was just wondering if there is an issue in this marketplace with, you know, monopoly or oligopoly power that people are refusing to go against the incumbent that we've had for twenty years, or is there something else that's going on where people are refusing to bid on our contract that's worth one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? So that's something that I just wanted to find out about as we go forward. Patricia?
What I can tell you is that we did actively solicit these six vendors that are here. Three of the vendors did call and ask a few questions. We suspect it's because we request a line item bid that it's a difficult bid. The pricing is very favorable for the school district from doing it that way. So Trio was the sole responder. And one of the reasons we are calling this a one-year term only and then leaving it up to district option to renew it for the multiple years is just to continue to check the marketplace. My belief is we're getting good pricing from Trio. We've had good success with them. I don't know anything more than that about why a vendor might decline a bid.
Okay. You know, and it's a very volatile market, paper products and plastic. It's one of those volatile markets that are out there. And, you know, for having the same incumbent for twenty years either says a lot about great pricing, or that just no one else wants to participate in this market. So I just want to figure out, better understand, you know, what's that, you know, what's happening? Is there any way that we could improve the potential outcome by, you know, working with other vendors to help them complete that bid or make the bidding less onerous potentially? But, you know, with that, you know, I will make a motion to accept the contract for the disposable items that was removed from the consent agenda. I will make a motion to accept that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dean Henke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed, six to nothing. Next up is the consent agenda. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Director Craig, thank you. It's slow tonight, I haven't had my third cup of coffee. By Director Craig, second.
Second.
By Director Henke. All in favor accepting the items in the consent agenda except for item O, which has been removed? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed to approve the consent agenda, six to nothing. Next on the agenda is the long-term facilities maintenance plan, and I believe Director Magnuson or Executive Director Magnuson is going to present.
As is stated in the memo, we recommend that the board approve the long-term facility maintenance, or LTFM, ten-year plan as it's presented in the materials. And as a reminder, LTFM funding is provided exclusively for deferred maintenance projects and can't be used for other purposes. So our LTFM plan has been re-prioritized to allow continued progress toward the completion of our critical deferred maintenance projects while keeping potential future enrollment and capacity management advisory committee construction in mind. So we're trying to make sure that we make the most efficient use of our taxpayers' funding by keeping all of those projects in mind. School board approval of the plan tonight will ensure that LTFM revenue is included in the pay 2019 preliminary levy for school board approval that you'll see in September.
So I will make a motion to accept the LTFM plan as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Director, yeah, I almost said Director Craig, Director Douglas. Is there any discussion? This is certainly not the first time that we've discussed this. We have had work sessions, several meetings. This is an ongoing process that started several years ago, and this is now approving the third year, or the third iteration of the ten-year plan that is doing significant work to improve the schools across the district. Many schools across the district have already been worked on, they're being worked on this summer. Major improvements, other minor improvements are pretty much going on in almost every school that's out there. And a lot of that is due to this planning that we put in place several years ago and that we are continuing as a board to support maintaining our schools in a manner that befits our students, to improve the spaces that they are in, to maintain them properly, and in order to continue to protect the assets of the taxpayers of this district. Any other comments or discussion?
I think you've pretty well covered it.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we have a motion and a second in order to accept the plan and approve it as given. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion to accept the LTFM as proposed passes six to nothing. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is recommendation for approval agreement on terms and conditions of employment between Independent School District 279 School Board and the confidential support specialist from July one, 2018 through June thirtieth, 2020. Laurel?
Good evening, Chair Ostafi, School Board Members and Superintendent Reese Graff. On the agenda this evening for school board action are recommendations for approval for three employee group contracts comprised of confidential support, custodial, and school nutrition staff. The contracts you'll be considering this evening include approximately three hundred and fifty employees who serve in essential frontline support positions throughout the district. All of these agreements expired on June thirtieth, 2018, and the new agreements contain language that contains current district practices as well as additional provisions that serve to support our district mission and strategic priorities. School board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, to ask questions, dialogue about the new provisions, and to consider financial implications. The new contract provisions fall within the financial parameters set by the board for the 2018-2020 contract term. It's the superintendent's recommendation that you approve the employee contracts presented to you this evening.
All right. Thank you, Laurel. We have three motions that have to be made, and we'll go through in order. The first one, and I'll make the motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between Independent School District 279 and School Board and Confidential Support Specialist, July one, 2018 through June thirtieth, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Director Henke?
So within the document provided, the salary advancements are now changed to percentages. And I know for many, many years we had worked to get fixed dollar amounts so that, you know, with a percentage, I'm assuming it's based on salary?
Correct.
Yep. So with percentages, it's going to be automatically increasing as salaries increase, whereas a fixed dollar amount then has to be negotiated. And so I'm just wondering the move away from fixed dollar amounts to percentages.
As a group in negotiation strategy and bringing the idea to the school board, there was a conversation related to equity versus equality, and ensuring that dollar amounts reflected an equitable percentage increase as opposed to a flat dollar amount, which is not necessarily proportional to salary. And it was calculated based on the dollar amounts, and then we calculated the percent that would be equivalent in terms of the dollar amounts at that time.
Thank you. Any other discussions or questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to nothing. Next up is a recommendation for approval of the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between Independent School District 279, the Osseo School Board, and the Osseo School Nutrition Association, effective July one, 2018 through June thirtieth, 2020. Laurel, you've already covered all of that. So I will make a motion to accept the agreement as presented to us. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. Any discussion? All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor of accepting the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, six nothing. Third up is the recommendation for approval, the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and the Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union, Local Number three twenty, effective July one, 2018 through June thirtieth, 2020. I will make a motion to accept that agreement, the approval of the agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Director Henke?
Quick question. So within this contract, some of the employees may be eligible for additional compensation based on a certification, but the certification may not specifically be tied to a job requirement. And so I've seen this in the past, and so I'm just wondering, so we're continuing the practice, so even though the job does not require a certification, if they have it, depending on when they were hired, we may be paying them for that certification?
In some, that's correct. In some cases, we have made modifications to the collective bargaining agreement related to a pool license, for example, and that is required and paid only at the middle school, where it's required to have because we have pools. Other considerations were taken into account because we want additional support staff for people to be able to check boilers on the weekends and do coverage so that it's not the same staff. We also want to promote and grow from within, and we create a learning opportunity and want to encourage people to get certifications in additional areas so that they are at their highest level.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And that is something that we had discussed in negotiations regarding, you know, the benefit to the district, and I think Laurel put that properly as, I'd rather have greater flexibility. You know, if it gets out of control where everyone has something that they don't need, that's one thing, but we are trying to grow our staff and improve their abilities and their skills, as well as the outcome for the district, so.
I also have, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to the negotiation strategy team and everybody involved for all the work that we've been doing, and especially Laurel's team on consistency across groups, and having a lot of the same language, that's been really, really important, so thank you.
Director Craig?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make the point, too, that we know that the tail-up pool is getting smaller, and so it's important, especially in the marketplace, we need to stay competitive with our Brent Heart districts and districts around town. And I think all these additional benefits add to greater viability in the marketplace. So that's my reasoning behind supporting those contracts tonight. So that's all.
All right, thank you. And I want to add, you know, a lot of these jobs within this Teamsters contract are the jobs that people, told people for twenty and thirty years, don't go into. These are the skilled trades. These are the, these are the jobs and the roles that keep the building heated, lit, standing, et cetera. So, and we've actually done some things within the district just recently in order to start growing our skilled trades program, and we can address that another time. That is something that with three point four percent unemployment, we definitely need to work on growing our employees, valued employees internally, as well as helping grow the next generation of that workforce, and that's what we're trying to do within the district. So any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Director Henke?
And I just asked a question because if, if the job requires it, or if they are in a role where they may occasionally fit into that, I'm okay with that. It's just if somebody's not in a role, let's say where they're going to need a boiler's license, it, it's a little bit of a stretch to pay additional dollars for a boiler's license when the job you're currently in, or may even rotate into doesn't require that. So that's my concern. I will vote to support the contract, it's just a piece that I wanted to raise.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? With that, call the vote. All in favor of accepting the agreement with Teamsters Local Number three twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, six nothing. Okay, next up on the agenda is the resolution authorizing ratification and approval of the TIES reorganization agreement. And Director Burgett, you have some comments on that?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair Ostafi. As you may recall, back in January, we voted along with the forty-six other districts, I think there was one that didn't vote to approve it, but to dissolve the TIES organization, the collaborative as it was. And at that time, the predicted amount that was going to be, needed to be paid was on the order of seventy-two dollars, and we were going to, per student, and we were going to spread that out over two years. And in the context of that, we're looking for ways to, the TIES Executive Committee was looking for ways to mitigate that expense, and that include partnerships, it include, you know, selling different things off, et cetera. And the TIES Executive Committee, of which I sit on the committee, and the other districts, and the new management of TIES, worked very hard to find an alternative that would minimize that expense. And that alternative has come through the acquisition of TIES assets and contracts and knowledge by a group, to a group that was called the National Joint Powers Association, which was in Staples, Minnesota, and has now been renamed to Sourcewell. So TIES is really being acquired by Sourcewell, including their business, including their employees. And they plan to expand and provide even more additional services, but the important part here is without any kind of membership agreement that locks you in for any annual fee. So as it was before, we had an annual fee, we paid to TIES, we were an owner member, we shared in whatever benefits, we also shared in whatever liabilities. This ends that. So we can continue to purchase the same products we've purchased before, we just can move to other products if those better meet our needs, and not have to worry about what that might do to cause us future liabilities. So this is, from what we can tell, the Executive Committee is the best way forward to minimize future liabilities, get the most out of what we, assets we had in terms of intellectual property and ongoing business concern, and minimize expenses in the best way forward. And so this agreement, these agreements that we're ratifying have been reviewed by multiple teams of lawyers and other districts, and so I heartily support them, and I think this is the best way for us, forward for us and our students, and will give us a lot of flexibility in the future. So, and also, once the building sells, then we'll get whatever proceeds, hopefully we'll get proceeds out of that sale. And so I'll continue to be involved with the TIES Executive Committee, but instead of being an executive committee that decides those sorts of things, the business role will be taken over by Sourcewell, and then we'll pretty much be relegated to just managing the building on its way to being sold, which we'll try to do quickly for the most money we can, best value. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Director Burgett?
Yes.
Do you recall how many districts have already approved their resolution?
Um, I've, I don't know at this point. I'll find out tomorrow morning at the Executive Committee meeting. I think it's more than twenty-ish, maybe Patricia might know?
I don't.
Anthony?
We haven't gotten an update yet on that.
The goal was for all the districts to ratify this by the end of July. And also there was a previous resolution to authorize superintendents to take that action if case board members aren't able to meet, but then this is like a final approval of what action the support, the superintendents took. So this is kind of a formality.
Yeah, back in June, we did take a roll call vote, I think it was June or maybe it was in May, the last time we took the only roll call vote, that was for this. So this is, again, this is just an update with some final details of the Sourcewell piece, as well as some of the liabilities around the property, so.
Correct.
Can you just, I know it's stated in the documents that were provided online, but for people that are watching at home, can you share what the price per student went down to for the district?
Oh, it was going to be seventy-two dollars per student. It went down to, I think it was nineteen dollars and, nineteen dollars and fifteen cents per student, so significant savings.
So at fifty-three dollars times twenty-one thousand students, you know, that's, that's a lot of money. We've saved over a million dollars by entering into this agreement and by having the TIES Board negotiate this transfer, this sale, rather than just dissolving and having everyone go out of the road.
Right, and one of the important things for the Executive Committee is for us to, you know, I think the analogy was land this plane safely. So everybody has a good landing, and you wonder, well, you know, other, other people were saying, oh, just cut it and run, and then whatever happens, happens. Well, we can't allow that because our staff and our students need these services, we need to be able to, for example, let's say five years from now, one of our students needs his transcripts because he wants to go back to college, or wants to go to college for the first time. In order to get that, those transcripts, the data has to be produced. Now, how does that happen? Well, if the, if the data is not in a place where you can get at it, that's going to be a problem. Well, Sourcewell is going to take that over so that we can request it. Now, as no longer an owner, we'll have to pay a small fee to do that, but the data can be, can be retrieved. So we need to make sure that's, that continues.
I have one other question.
I have one other question, either maybe you or Anthony. What services, if any, did the district stick with, like through Sourcewell, or not?
So, we have several services that will be continuing, and there are some that we're, we're evaluating as well, just to understand what's best for our district. I think the largest one is E-Finance Plus, the new HR finance system, which we have started implementation on and are looking to go live in January with, that is going to be continued to run and operated by Sourcewell, which is a good thing for us for service and continuity to make sure that those implementations take place. The other products that we have, I'll just quickly run off, we run Fee Pay, which will continue with Sourcewell, IQ, which is teachers, how they access data, assessment data on students and grouping data, Cognos, which is a large IBM data and analytics tool that we use in both HR, finance, and in assessment, research, and evaluation, RAA Department uses that tool, and keeps certified for professional development tracking, and Internet Services.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I move a roll call vote be taken to approve the resolution in Action Item 7E, authorizing ratification and approval of Ties reorganization agreement. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Brigitte. So, I will now take a roll call vote. Director Brigitte? Aye. Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Fortner?
Aye.
Director Henke?
Aye.
Aye. With six votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and no abstentions, the motion passes. So, let's go to next agenda item, which is the second reading of Policy 707, Non-Instructional Operations, Transportation of Students. Tim Palmetier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Reskrap. On the agenda tonight are revisions to Policy 707, and adoption of proposed Policy 520 pertaining to student surveys. These are both action items, as the Board Chair has stated. The first reading for these policies was at the last School Board meeting on June 19th, 2018. At least four weeks have passed since the first reading of these policies, and under School Board bylaws, if approved, the Board, by the Board this evening, the policies will be amended or adopted as they are implemented, and implemented. First for consideration is Policy 707, portions of, this contains portions of the district's transportation policy, and is required in part by Minnesota law. The policy and accompanying appendices were last reviewed in the 2014-15 school year. The proposed amendments are intended to address some of the following concerns: clarifying parent responsibility to provide transportation for extracurricular activities where the district is not providing transportation, clarifying expectations for students and parents requesting to transport their students when transportation is available for extracurricular activities, clarifying the processes for staff to obtain approval to personally provide transportation to students in emergency circumstances, modifying the process for parents to request bus stop changes and to appeal district determinations, setting timelines for providing bus safety training to students, affirming parent responsibility for getting students to bus stops and for monitoring student behavior at the bus stop, clarifying student behavior expectation on buses, establishing requirements regarding access to and use of seat belts on Class III vehicles, and establishing a requirement consistent with state law that buses possessing video or audio recording devices provide written notice of the use of such devices. And then if I could, also before the Board on an action item, that is Policy 520, Policy 520, again pertaining to student surveys, is a newly proposed policy. Minnesota Statute 121A065 requires the Board to adopt such a policy regarding this issue, and consistent with these new requirements of Minnesota statute, the proposed policy addresses issues related to notification to parents about district survey policy, and advanced notification of specific, a specific anticipated student surveys, parent opportunity to review surveys and to opt their children out of participating in a survey, and prohibitions against imposing an academic penalty or other penalty on students who opt out of a survey.
Okay, thank you. I will make a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 707, Non-Instructional Operations, Transportation of Students. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Douglas, is there any discussion?
Ms. Chair?
Director Henke?
Just a quick question, so on the first line, the non-instructional operations, in item number four, so there's new language added that says if the school district does not arrange for extracurricular and co-curricular transportation, students who wish to participate are responsible for arranging or providing their own transportation. So, that looks like it's new language, can you just say more about the school district when it does not arrange? Does that mean it may be a new program, and, because my past experience is that some new programs may not be fully integrated into the, into the district, and so students transport themselves, so I'm just trying to get some clarification on what it means if the school district does not arrange.
Yeah, that's correct, there are some activities where the school district is not providing for transportation, this is intended to address those limited situations. I don't have the, all the specific extracurricular activities which would be subject to that, but this provision essentially makes it clear that that is an acceptable, you know, process to follow in situations where the, where the school district simply doesn't provide that.
Yeah, I know years ago, it was lacrosse, my daughter played lacrosse, and so that was a new, a new sport to the school, and they did not provide transportation, and, and I'm asking because the sentence prior to that is, may, may be provided if financial resources are available, so, just, I just wanted to clarify the when and the how of we would not arrange. Thank you.
And I think one of the, you know, there are several clubs that are extracurricular, that aren't sports, that may meet in the evenings from 6 to 8 o'clock, or 5 to 9, or whatever, working on different projects, those are the, those are one type of things that we are not providing transportation for, if you want to participate in that, you need to get there yourself, and you need to get home yourself, so, yeah, there's a wide range of clubs, not just sports, that, that fall under our extracurricular activities. Any other questions? Okay, with that, we'll take a vote, all in favor of approving the second reading of Policy 707, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six nothing. So, now we will move on to the next item, which Tim also mentioned, which was the second reading of Policy 520, Student Surveys. Is there, I will make a motion that we approve the second reading of Policy 520, Student Surveys, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Brigitte, is there any discussion?
It was him.
It was Director Henke, all right, Director Henke. Is there any discussion? I, I know that surveys are of great concern to parents in the district, that we do not ask for intrusive information from the students, most of whom are minors, this is something that went to the state legislature, in fact, I think some parents from our district helped spearhead some of that, so, this is something that we're doing to address the state rules, but we're also doing it because it is, is the right thing to do, and, you know, we, we are participating in some items, but we are making it try to be very transparent and very clear to parents of what the questions are, can they opt out, or how can they opt out, and, and trying not to be intrusive, you know, with their students and with that type of information. So, with that, any other discussion? So, we have the motion, and take the vote, all in favor to approve the second reading of Policy 520, Student Surveys, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six nothing. And the next one is always the fun one, which is a motion to accept gifts to the district totaling $154,913. I will make a motion to graciously accept gifts to the district totaling $154,900, Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Douglas, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six to nothing, and I would like to, again, thank everyone who has donated and worked at fundraisers and done a lot of work to help students across the district, thank you. The added agenda item, which we discussed at the start of the meeting, the approval of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights and Osseo Area Schools Collaboration Agreement. Tim Palmetier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Reskrap. In October of this past school year, the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights wrote letters to at least 43 school districts and charter schools in Minnesota, outlining his concern that a disproportionate number of students of color and students with disabilities were being suspended or expelled by identified school districts. Osseo Area Schools was one of the school districts receiving, was receiving a letter from the department. In his letter, the Commissioner informed each of the school districts and charter schools that the department intended to file a Commissioner's charge against any of the entities that did not express an interest in reaching a settlement with the department. In response to the Commissioner's letter, former Superintendent Kate McGuire and several other district leaders and members of Cabinet met with the Commissioner in late October to explain the district's considerable strategic planning and equity and policy work dedicated at achieving equitable outcomes, including the elimination of disparities in discipline. While the department acknowledged the efforts of the district, it continued to express strong interest in reaching conciliation agreements with Osseo and other identified school districts. As a result, over the following months, the department engaged in negotiations with Osseo and the other districts in an effort to reach individual agreements in lieu of the Commissioner's charge. The Commissioner's charge is a complaint process available to the Commissioner in the absence of a specific complaint brought forward by an aggrieved individual. At this point, the department has reached agreements with over 20 school districts and charter schools. For its part, Osseo School Administration has attempted to negotiate terms for a collaborative agreement with the department that allows the district to continue with its prior equity work, and which preserves district resources which might otherwise be spent on litigating a charge with the department. This June, the district proposed tentative terms for a collabora, a collaboration agreement with the department, and the department indicated that they would accept these terms. The proposed agreement before the Board for its consideration tonight is the terms that were outlined to the department. This includes three major components, first, it requires the district to continue with the implementation of its strategic plan and equity policy, to obtain qualitative data input from students, parents, and teachers concerning the strategic plan, and to provide the Department of Human Rights with information regarding the implementation of the plan. It also requires the district to provide semi, semi-annual reporting to the department on its efforts to implement the strategic plan, and also provide aggregate data related to suspension and expulsion numbers broken down by race, ethnicity, national origin, gender, and disability. And finally, it requires a representative of the district to participate in a department-created committee during the 2018-19 school year, which will seek to develop and create best practices to reduce suspensions and expulsion rates for racial groups and students with disabilities. Finally, it's important to note that the agreement before the Board is called a collaboration agreement, and not a conciliation agreement. This distinction makes it clear that the agreement has been reached in a voluntary manner without a finding by the department as to whether the district is in compliance, in compliance with the Minnesota Human Rights Act. In fact, the agreement specifically provides the collaboration agreement is not an indication or admission of any liability or wrongdoing by any, either party, and the department has not made a probable cause determination finding against the district, and that the district denies any violation of the Act. So, in order to continue to focus on the district's priority work and to avoid considerable costs associated with defending a charge, or, and/or subsequent litigation, it's my recommendation that the Board approve the agreement before tonight.
Thank you. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve the collaboration agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Brigitte, is there any discussion?
Ms. Chair?
Director Henke?
Tim, I just, I had a couple of questions, and can, can you speak more about a Commissioner's charge, because there's no, so in reading this, there's no, no individual has brought forth a complaint, and so, this Commissioner in, within the department is bringing this forth against the Osseo School District, can you just talk more about the cost of, if, if we didn't enter into this agreement, what, what would we be looking at?
Sure, I think that there's probably two questions to address there. First of all, as it relates to the question about a Commissioner's charge, it's correct that there is no individual that filed, has filed a charge in this instance against Osseo or any of the 42 other districts that have been named. Minnesota statute affords the Commissioner the authority, if he has, he or she has reason to believe that there might be probable cause for a violation of the Act, they can bring a charge of their own accord. When you're faced with a charge of this nature, essentially, you have to go through an investigation process with the department, where the department seeks to prove whether or not there's probable cause in connection with potential violation of the Act. The, the process of going through a charge with the department in and of itself can be quite extensive. In a situation like this, there would likely be multiple data requests, there would be production of just millions, perhaps, pages, that might be an exaggeration, but certainly hundreds of thousands of pages of documentation to satisfy the requests of the department related to assertions of disproportionality in terms of discipline processes. So, it's a very onerous process, it's also onerous in terms of effect on staff. To address a question with respect to costs, there are corollary-type processes that, that have been approached by the, by the Office of Civil Rights at, at the federal level, and it's not unusual to see situations like that costing 30,000 to 50,000, just in terms of responding to the investigation itself. That doesn't even speak towards the notion of potential hearings that would be held in the event that the department did make a finding of probable cause, that would result in an administrative hearing at a state level, which would incur additional costs to the school, and also the possibility of, of subsequent appeals and litigations in district court. So, essentially, the, the cost can be considerable for a school district. I will also state, as it relates to this particular agreement, this agreement, in my estimation, essentially is, is obligating us to do what we have been doing for many years, and it's work that, that this Board has demonstrated commitment towards, so I, I think when we consider the, the terms of the agreement versus the possible costs of, of litigating this, that's the basis of my recommendation.
Ms. Chair?
Yes?
And, and so it also states in here that, it says the distinction makes it clear that the agreement has been reached in a voluntary manner without, without a finding by the department as to whether we're in compliance or not, and so it doesn't feel real voluntary if, if there's a threat of litigation, and knowing the, the financial and the, and the, the people cost of gathering this data, because we already submit a lot of data to MDE, and MDE has not raised this issue, and so to me, it doesn't feel overly voluntary, if, so it's either you sign this agreement, or we could potentially file a lawsuit against you. It's maybe more of a rhetorical than...
If, if I might respond, I mean, that is kind of the nature of, of how quote-unquote litigation oftentimes is settled, it hardly... litigation oftentimes is settled. It hardly, uh, feels voluntary at the moment.
Yeah. So, so even though we've been working hard for many, many years, and, and we've probably been leading this in the state, we're still being pulled in with forty-two other school districts, uh, and I'm going to assume mostly within the metropolitan, but it, so within the, yeah, so it could be outstate, but mostly metropolitan. Okay, thank you.
Director Henke, to, to that point, and, you know, we, I, I, from when this started, I think it was clear in discussions with administration that, uh, Department of Human Rights really wanted Osseo as part of this because of the great work that we've done to be in these round tables, to be in these, uh, meetings in order to assist, uh, other districts to get to the point where we're at and to continue to move forward. Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm disappointed that it, it, it comes down to, you know, somewhat of coercion because it really doesn't reflect what our staff has been doing. You know, we, we started this a long time ago without any direction from MDE or the Human Rights Commission, you know, far prior to my time and, and everyone else's. Uh, you know, we've been a leader in the work to eliminate disproportionality, and we're often held up as a model state-level meetings, as you said, by MDE itself, uh, and, and by other school districts. Uh, we've made significant progress in, in important areas that are critical to state leaders. Uh, notably, we were previously cited by the state for racial disproportionality and the identification and suspension of students with special needs. Uh, we have met state expectations in those areas since the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year. That goes to a lot of the work that we've done to improve those outcomes. Uh, and since twenty twelve, uh, for the last six years, our strategic plan has included board-approved priority work aimed at ensuring equitable student achievement, including the elimination of racial disproportionality across multiple areas. Again, things that we've already been doing. The, the state isn't, uh, isn't asking us to do anything more. For nine years, we've had a district-level administrator who's been assigned to work with all of our schools to help ensure that equitable application of discipline for each type of incident across all the schools and across all the populations. So, we've been doing that for quite a long time, and that's one of the items that, uh, the commissioner wants to address with the forty-two other school districts. Uh, we've been leading in that, uh, for years, trying to, uh, trying to address that issue. Um, you know, finally, the agreement with the Department of Human Rights requires that we continue to work what we've been doing. So, and again, we've been doing it, uh, you know, and we took it on ourselves years ago without their direction or without their input, and they're basically not asking us to do anything more than we've already been doing, uh, except, I think, press a button one more time per year to send additional data that we're already sending to MDE. Uh, so again, we're going to continue with our state-leading work towards achieving no racial disproportionality, uh, and we agree to submit the discipline data to Department of Human Rights twice a year, uh, in addition to the existing once-a-year submitted to MDE and the three times a year that we reviewed internally. So, again, we're not being asked to do really anything more than we've been doing, and in fact, uh, with MDE holding us up and, and other districts holding us up, uh, to, to someone they want to try to emulate, uh, and, and we can always do more and, and do better. Uh, and I think this is going to help other districts, uh, along with ourselves, continue to move down that path. Uh, and, and again, they, uh, they really express an interest in, in us being in here, and I think they could have gone about it a, a different way, asking nicely. Uh, but, uh, you know, this is something that I think we should be proud of because we have been leading this. Uh, and like I said, we, we can continue to work on this, continue to lead by participation in, in these, uh, diversion committees, round tables, and, and other type of things that we have. Any other? Yes?
Mr. Chair?
Director Craig?
Thank you. Um, this is an issue before the board, but I wanted to recognize all the work that our assistant superintendents, Kelly Parpar, Stephen Flick, and other members of administration have put into this time, uh, into this, uh, situation, including the great negotiation work, um, that Tim Palmetier has put in. Um, so, we are here making the decision, but they have spent countless hours, uh, trying to figure out just exactly the best situation for our district. So, thank you from myself, um, for all your hard work. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Uh, I would echo that. Um, I mean, there's a lot of hard work that went into just understanding what this is. Um, so, on top of the work we're already doing, on top of the reporting we're already doing, um, you know, if they want to, if they want to hold us up as a district that, that is doing the right work to, to threaten a lawsuit unless we, uh, uh, agree to, it, it, I'm struggling to make sense of it. Um, and, and so, for, for that and other reasons, I won't be able to support this agreement.
Okay. Uh, you know, I, I'm confident in fighting a potential charge in the lawsuit without being in the best interest of, of the students, staff, and families of this district, or the taxpayers. Uh, it would require a diversion of significant staff time and resources. Uh, I will and, and can support this, uh, agreement. So, we do, uh, any other comments? We...
I just wanted to echo some of the things that you guys have all said, but I, I really wanted to emphasize, um, and praise our, our district leaders of the past for seeing years ago how important this work was and implementing it before anybody said that it needed to be done, and leading the way in Minnesota. And, um, I just wanted to say thank you to, to everyone who's been a part of that work. Um, board members of past, administration of past, and present. Um, everyone has put a lot of work into this, um, then and now, and, um, this is, this is really good work, even though it does feel like we're being kind of backed into a corner, um, with this collaborative agreement. Um, ultimately, we're still going to be doing what's best for our students and staff in our district.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, with that, uh, we do have a motion, and it has been, uh, seconded. Uh, correct? Yeah, we did go through that.
Yes.
And, uh, I will now call the vote. Uh, all in favor to approve, uh, the collaboration agreement with Minnesota Department of Human Rights, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed?
No.
Uh, passes five to one. Thank you. Next up on the agenda are the announcements. A negotiation strategy meeting will be held on Tuesday, July thirty-first, twenty eighteen, at seven PM in room N ten at the Educational Service Center. This meeting will be closed to the public. A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, August twenty-first, twenty eighteen, at six PM in the forum room at the ESC. The topic will be the strategic priority update for our digital learning-for-all program. This meeting will be open to the public. A regular school board meeting will be held on Tuesday, August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, at six PM in the boardroom at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A negotiation strategy meeting will be held on Tuesday, August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, at seven PM in room N ten at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. Uh, at, uh, at this time, I will make a motion to adjourn at seven fifteen PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Douglas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we are now adjourned at, uh, seven fifteen PM. Thank you.